All right, I'd like to call over the regular meeting of the Prairie Municipal Authority, December 21st, 2020 at 6:15. Roll call, please.
Hold on. Vaughn?
Here.
Gilbeck?
Baker?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
White?
Here.
Laurel?
Here.
White?
Strowler?
Here. I do declare a quorum. Councilor here will be prepared for this.
Sure, sure. That's great. God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our community. Help us to act with character and conviction and help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Give us all the spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian. I appreciate it. Item number one is a consent agenda. If there's one item there for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Strowler?
Yes, thank you. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the PMA agenda. Period, none. Item five, population accommodations that were required by the governing body. Period, none of those either. Item six, motion on adjournment.
Your turn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
All right, Vaughn?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
And Strowler?
Yes, thank you. Tell me when you're ready. Ready? Okay, I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Perry, December 21st, 2020 at 6:17. Roll call, please.
Look, hold on. Vaughn?
Here.
Gilbeck? Baker?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
White?
Here.
Laurel?
Here.
Whites? Strowler?
Here. I do declare a quorum. Item number one is a consent agenda. If there's anything on there or someone would like to pull off, we can do so. There's a couple items that I would like to talk about myself. Let me see. Okay, any others? I would like to pull off E and L, please. So, we need a motion to approve a consent agenda minus E, J, and L.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
White?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
And Strowler?
Yes, thank you. Just because E comes before J, I'll start. I would like to, there's several things and there's an attachment that is at my seat. I'm assuming that everyone has his attachment. Craig, clear it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. There was a blank left on this item in your information. It didn't say what size or roll off that we would support. But I guess my question is for you, Larry, I don't understand why we would do this.
What you have in front of you is the blank, fill in the blank basically. It's four 30-yard roll-offs, not dumpsters. We are continuing to have abandoned homes, structures that should come down. We also have some folks that are interested in purchasing those and tearing them down. This is a method to incentivize that and to encourage that so that we can get more coming down.
Well, if there's dilapidated, in my mind, I'm just speaking my mind, okay? If there's dilapidated homes in town, why do we want to incur a cost? I mean, if those people are going to buy them, if I could look at a dilapidated home and say, I want to buy this property, I want to tear it down, I'm assuming all the responsibility and all the expenses. Why does the city need to get some skin in their game to?
If a structure is dilapidated and we end up tearing it down, it's four to five, maybe even $6,000 for us to do it in-house if it was a one-story structure. If someone would like to come in and take down an old house and put it, and build a new house there, and once it gets to completion of occupancy, certificate of occupancy, then we remit that part to them. They will already have paid this to Jim Davis Sanitation.
What does a roll-off, the 30-yard roll-off, cost?
$400, our cost.
So, we could have up to $1,600 in?
$1,600. And we can adjust that if we would like down one or up one. But I think that the ones that we've been taking down since I've been here anyway have been three to four.
Well, I, I'm a firm believer in not offering things. I mean, if it's a situation where we would have to negotiate that, I think that's one thing. But to just straight out offer that, if whomever buys the home, say Curtis, for instance, if he buys the home and he assumes that he's going to be responsible for all of that and he's happy with that, I don't see the point of us saying, hey, we're going to give you $1,600. I just don't see the point of that. I mean, if it's something that we have to negotiate, you know, if the guy's on the fence about how much it costs, you know, I think that that's one thing. But I just don't feel like it did. And it was my belief. I mean, it's a great thing that we picked up limbs in the City of Perry. But I don't feel like that we should have said, just throw your limbs to the curb, we'll come pick them up. Because what's happened now is people have cut down trees that didn't even come down and they threw them to the curb. And so, we're picking them up too. That's just my belief. So, that's the end of my two cents.
I kind of see both sides. I mean, the city's going to pay less to provide those than they are if they tear it down themselves. And at the same time, someone wants to buy a piece of property, I mean, it's what's it?
But who, not to interrupt you, but who said that that person's not going to buy that piece of property and the city's never going to have to deal with it anyway?
Well, from my view, if I'm looking at buying a piece of property and there's something to tear down there, and that costs $4,000 to $5,000, I would just spend what that property's worth just on the tear down. And so, are you going to sell that property or not?
Well, I mean, why would the city get involved, period? Why don't, that's my point. I mean, who says that we're going to ever have to incur the expense? I mean, if it's up for sale, can you come up and say, I want to buy that?
Well, don't we usually incur the expense once we have to take it anyways?
Well, what if we don't have to take it, is my point. What if someone wants that lot and they're willing to take that lot and tear that house down? I'm not saying we can't do that. I just don't think we just throw that out in front. I think we negotiate that.
So, do we just offer it if it's a property that we've taken? Would that be the better? I mean, because if the property's not even worth what it costs to tear it down, nobody's going to buy it. And we're stuck with it, which, I don't know. It's not a good situation, but maybe it wouldn't incur so much cost. I don't know.
Any further discussion on that? All right, we can move to item J.
First of all, it bothered me a little bit that there was like, it's very true that amount that was placed on the consent agenda because I could have easily overlooked it. And I know that we're trying to cut down the agenda for cause of the fact of, you know, we're getting out here early and stuff. But also, I wanted to ask where the money would come from these, where the money would come from these vehicles. If it's out of the budget that he was allotted for last year and he has that much money left, or is it coming from somewhere else? And I wondered if, it seems like just, it may have been three years ago, but it seemed like about a year ago, I remember us buying seven vehicles in our winter. One thing that sold me on that was I heard Brian say, if we get these, we don't need to buy them for a long time. And I may be wrong on that, John, and you don't want to bring them back. Love you.
I've told him that several times. It was seven years. I won't be back for seven years, to be honest.
Did my group seven years ago.
I don't know how many years ago that was.
It's been five years now since we got our cars. May, May of next year will be five years because we were 2016s when we bought them.
That way.
Yep, time flies. But we're not wanting to get rid of the current Chargers.
I thought it was last year.
No, it's been five years almost.
And then another thing that I had a concern with in regard to where the money's coming from is that if it wasn't for his budget, is this a good time to be spending that large amount with the uncertainty of what's happening in our chaotic situation in America? And those are just some thoughts that I have already in general. I know I've been out of pocket for a while.
All right, fully all right. I appreciate your concerns.
Brian, you want to address this? Do I need to stand anywhere or just?
Just talk.
Okay. The Chargers that we got in 2016, right now, they currently have 40 to 60,000 miles. They're, we're grateful that they were still under warranty because we've had three of them basically have engines, the heads blew out, they were under warranty, it didn't cost us anything. We have run into a problem lately. The fans break and then shoot into the radiator. We've had three of those which wasn't covered warranty because it's not power terrain. The reason we're asking for four cars, we're not wanting to get rid of the Chargers. They're still running good. They've still got the 100,000 mile power terrain. They're still under warranty. It's the cars that we did not replace, which were '07s. We have one vehicle, the motor and transmission's blown. It would cost more to get that. That's the Durango that we used to have, the black one that I drove back in '06. It became K-9 unit, the motor and transmission blew. It's sitting on the side of the parking lot basically for surplus. The detective drives a 2004 Dodge Dakota pickup that was given to us by OBN. We were specifically supposed to be doing our undercover, doing things, but that's his primary vehicle right now. He has nowhere to put his detective equipment. He can't show up to crime scenes, have proper equipment because he's driving a truck that the paint is completely faded off of. I mean, if you put it for sale, if you got $800 warranty, you'd be lucky. Lieutenant Odell's driving a black Charger, which we bought from Webb's Body Shop back in '07, and it was on a salvage title when we bought it. If he was to get in pursuit right now, he couldn't because the front end is completely out of the car. It's just basically a to and from school car right now to getting to and from. So, and then the Tahos, we bought new in 2013. And back on the Charger that Lieutenant drives, I drove it to Muskogee to three weeks of class back in 14 or 15, and a hailstorm hit it and completely totaled it. But then we only have liability insurance on it because it was cheaper to get it fixed than what it would be to buy a new car. But the car is completely, it would cost, I think it's $6,800 to get the front end and everything fixed on it. The car's maybe worth $2,500. So, it's just not worth getting that. So, I'm wanting to replace cars that we haven't replaced that were on salvage titles or even blowed up. And then the Tahos, we did get new in 2013. One Tahoe has $110,000, the other one has $156,000. We're wanting to get rid of that, which at that point, I think we could get a little bit in return for a trade-in on it instead of, because I get, it makes me so upset to buy cars back in the Crown big days, $22,000. And when we got done with them, they gave us $500. I want to see us be able to trade a car in to get at least half our cost back to apply towards a trade-in. But I'm not seeking anything other than getting four replacement cars that we, that are needing replaced that we didn't get new before. So, we didn't get off, everybody didn't get a new car. These are just cars that are on salvage titles or blown up just to replace the cars that we do have.
I read all those papers that you gave about each one, and I knew that those were others, you know, other than the Chargers that I certainly didn't go up in five years. And that where will the money come from to pay for these? Are set out of your budget?
To become out of its budget. To would come, to would come out of its budget. To would come from a grant source.
I, are you done? I'm sorry. Go ahead, look, I apologize. Okay. You know, I don't know where this, where this came from. In the middle of our budget cycle, this all of a sudden, here we got cars and we talked about that we weren't going to do cars. This is a pretty good expense. I think this should be a budgeted item, an item that we budget at the budget time. And I darn sure am not comfortable approving this without CFO here, without Russ or Meredith to answer questions. And part two or three, I guess, to my question is that it says here, we have a quote from Seth Wadley for, well, this one says 30, one says 34.9, and the other one says 34.8, which is pretty similar. But a few days ago, I saw a quote, it was $45,000 in Bryce's hand.
It was what?
$45,000. A car.
One car?
$45,000, a quote I saw. Is that to be equipped?
Oh, well, yeah, there's, yeah, I mean, we get cars, we got to put lights on.
Well, I'm asking you, is it $45,000 or is it $34,000?
No, the car's 34, then there's separate quotes for the equipment.
Yeah, okay. So, we're talking about $180,000 with the cars, basically. So, I mean, it's just in my opinion that we need to talk to Russ about this or Meredith. And I don't think that all, for two years I know of now, I mean, our budget's been flat. There's no room for capital improvement. And we're asking for $180,000 for the cars and I just have nowhere. So, I have a real issue with that.
Yeah, I would agree. I just think that it's not the best time to commit $180,000. Any, I mean, as a business owner, we have to make those same kinds of decisions, things that you kind of need, but you kind of, it's so uncertain that you better just kind of survive during this time and get to the essentials. I mean, business can't shut down. I'm not saying, Brian, you can't get a car, but maybe there's some compromise in there instead of $180,000. Maybe, maybe you get one car or we budget $50,000 for repairs. It saves you $130,000. I mean, I just think we have to look at options. This is a very, very uncertain time. And as Bill said, we've been flat and below. And I think for us to make a commitment to spend four cars and next year, we're laying people off.
And I'm not saying, Brian, by any joke, guys don't deserve the cars. I 100% agree with you.
Oh, I understand.
And I just think that this is, this is a budgetary item that we need to budget at budget time and not come, come in the middle of the budget cycle. And then item L, I know that we do, we did have that truck wrecked where I actually seen it that day on being towed in. And I was like, what in the world's going on here? And, but anyway, so that was a used truck. I remember when we bought that truck, we bought it from, I believe, J&amp;J Solutions, if I remember right. It was, it was a used truck. So, I'm sure that the truck wasn't worth anything when we totaled it. So, another question I have, and I know we, you need a big truck for that, but where's the money coming for that expense?
What we're getting from the insurance company for a big total is $11,400 and change. So, that's a good part of that. But Vernon has said that this is the only vehicle that they have that can tow this, this, this large piece of equipment that especially is like 22,000, 23,000 pounds. Once it's loaded with water, sewer stuff, you know, you can just imagine what that is. And that if they don't have a larger vehicle like this and they put it on another vehicle, that could blow as well. Now, we have, now we're two vehicles now. And this is just simply to advertise. I do know that we've been looking for used ones and we've not been able to find one. Got Wadley doing it, looking, I've got Vance.
I know where there's a used 550 sitting right now for sale.
Okay.
Call K Electric tomorrow morning.
K Electric, okay.
They got one sitting on their yard for sale right now.
Any particular person?
I don't know that.
Tim Rodriguez is the executive director. I would start there.
They, I mean, that is, that's a big company. I know that they take really good care of their equipment. And periodically, what happens is they just put it on the side of the road, say, give me a bid, and they move on to another truck, you know? And it's, what it is, is a cabin chest sitting around in front of their shop.
It's something that can pull this.
I just thought about that when I seen 550. I mean, it's identical to the truck that we wrecked, except it's white. And I think it's an extended cab. I think, I'm pretty sure.
That's even better. You could take one truck to repair instead of two.
Well, I don't know, that extended cab, we got some big guys work for us, I'm sure. So, I mean, it is an option, okay? So, any other, any other questions? I'm sorry.
I have, can I go back to?
Yes, you can.
I was, he mentioned grant money for two of the vehicles, and I wondered, want that grant in for them?
The grant entails two Ford interceptors. And it would be with equipment.
And it's, is it a full grant or is it a?
It's a full grant for the two. That's what we've applied for. It's one that's pending now.
I don't think it's, until we talk to Russ, I hate doing this. I know we've done this multiple times just by being engaged at City Hall. We've gone out for bids for things and then we've never followed through with them. And I don't think it's fair to a company, being John Vance or we already got a Seth Wadley bid. I don't know how we got that bid prior to advertising that we did. I don't think it's fair to a company to put together a bid with us not having intent of ever fulfilling. I've known that to happen several times. And I would, if I was a business owner, I would appreciate that. So, personally, myself, I would like to table item J until we talk to Russ or Meredith for sure. I'm not comfortable with going to approve that. Item L, I would like to table that one at least until the next meeting, Larry, until you get ahold of K Electric and see what you could do there.
Okay.
And then, how does the rest of the council feel about E? I mean, I don't want to, I think that, I think it ought to be a negotiated situation, not just a free, here's your four numbers.
I would table that one too, just so we can get a paper from the city board and listen.
That sounds fair. So.
And then Russ could also, you know, probably have some extra.
Okay, I would, I would, as the mayor, would like to make the motion to table EJ and L.
Second.
Is that proper, Bryce?
Sure.
Okay. Rule call, please.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Heyer.
Yes.
Brown. White.
Yes.
Oral.
Yes.
Strohler.
Yes. Thank you, council. I really appreciate that. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the city agenda. Hearing none. Uh, item five, proclamations, combinations, reports required by the governing body. Hearing none of those. Item six, we're going to table item six because, uh, those folks are out of town on vacation. Uh, item seven, receive the city manager's monthly report. Larry?
You have on, uh, item seven, the usual city manager messenger. I did want to mention one of the things that we've been getting as far as a question, now that vaccinations are going along, whether we were going to mandate vaccinations. I don't intend to mandate. I think this is a personal decision. There are some that, that could, can't take it because religious beliefs, uh, or medical conditions that preclude them from taking this vaccine. Also, there's some folks that, that really don't have confidence in the vaccine, so I don't think that's something that we should, should impose that our, our, our belief on them. So, uh, there also could be some liability issues as far as adverse reaction if we mandate this. That's the extent of my comments tonight. Any questions?
Well, I, I had a question because I was listening last meeting when I couldn't be here, and I had all these things come up on Facebook, which was pretty interesting that I've never seen before, but, uh, can we, as a government entity, mandate anything? Can we just suggest, or we make it available, or can we, uh, highly recommend or something? Um, I mean, I don't know. One, one of the things that was coming, kept coming up, we were thinking was that we could not mandate. And I didn't know we were going to look that up, to know.
Bryce?
Well, I mean, the, uh, the state gives us authority under the emergency, in the emergency powers, there's authority, that authority is given to the mayor to declare things that are emergencies, both on natural calamities and man-made disasters. Whether it be a, uh, you know, a military action, or whether it would be Yellowstone blowing up, or whether it would be like we have right now in this pandemic, the authority comes from the, from, from the state in Title sixty-three to the mayor. Uh, we've kind of adopted that and provided some of that authority to the mayor, and some of it goes to the emergency management director. I mean, I know a lot of people say, you know, how can what you, the city, do be greater than the Constitution? But we're not really talking about, you know, we're talking about a health, safety, and welfare item. Uh, the power is given to the state, to the, to the municipalities. Uh, we, we have to decide how to exercise that. Now, on the, uh, on the face covering, uh, item that we, that we approved at the last meeting, I wouldn't call it a mandate because it wasn't a mandate. Uh, we left it up to the business to use their sound discretion. And of course, uh, if the business decides that masks, they want masks in there and folks don't wear masks, well, that's just as simple as, I think somebody suggested, you know, if you don't wear your shoes or you don't wear your shirt. If you don't wear your shirt, you come into the comeback, I bet, uh, Ms. Pacius will show you to the door. And if, and if you're not shown to the door, if you didn't decide that you're not going to go, well, this guy over here is going to come and, and, ultimately arrest you for trespassing, you know, which is the, really the, the way we set this up. We set it up that businesses could, could make those decisions, so it really isn't a, a mandate. But, uh, you know, hopefully we're, we're at the tail end of this, and so these questions will be nothing more than academic, you know? And, and, and we will be finished with this pandemic. But, uh, you know, I have to tell you that by law, uh, the law is, you know, is given from the state to the municipality. The question is, are you going too far? You know, is, it, does a regulation go too far? And that's where the courts are. I think where Larry is, I, I haven't opined yet on, on whether we can make firefighters, EMS workers, require them to take, uh, the, the medicine, because it hasn't been an issue. Our policy here is that, is that, uh, if you want to take, you can take it. Quite frankly, that's the policy, uh, everywhere in all my communities. Nobody has imposed, you know, a, a mandate. Uh, but I would suppose i- if there was a mandate, it could be enforced. Uh, I don't know that I would enforce it under this first vaccine that came out. It sounds to me like the second one, Madero, that is, that is coming out. And, and the whole way it, uh, it works on the system, it is probably a whole lot lighter than something that has to be kept frozen and, uh, and can only be used in a certain degree of temperature. But, uh, I haven't been called to answer that question, so, uh, thank goodness. Uh, sometimes it's better not to ask the lawyer, you know? And, and, and right now, uh, I, unless somebody has a, has a, has a problem with that, uh, we have, uh, you know, EMS workers and firemen and, and I suppose some policemen that would, that right now would prefer not to. And, and it's my understanding, their opinion may be different for the next vaccine that, that, that comes out. Uh, but, uh, this, this one right now, they prefer not to.
My, my wife works in the medical field for a pretty predominant facility in, in there. And it's optional where she works. So knowing that establishment, if they're not going to mandate, I don't think that, that we probably should either. Any questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry, very much. I appreciate you, uh, having the discussion. I really do.
Thank you.
Item number eight, discuss the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Bryce kind of jumped ahead there. I appreciate you getting off topic like that, counselor.
So it's kind of the same topic, you know, vaccines and COVID.
Is anybody got anything they wanted to discuss?
I just want to say, you know, when we first, when we had that meeting last time, and we made that proclamation, oh my gosh, it was like crazy the next day. And I even, I even texted Bill, and I said, oh, what have we done? But I'll be completely honest with you, um, since we've done that, there's been a lot more people that have been a lot more cautious. And you see it a lot more. So I, I just think it's.
It's, it's the initial bang, you know, that gets everybody. You know, that, that went pretty, uh, Curtis is right. If you do, um, most, everybody here does follow Facebook, but, you know, for the initial probably forty-eight hours, it was terrible.
Yeah.
And I don't think, I don't think that, and Bryce probably knows more than anybody, everything is interpreted fifteen different ways, you know? And, uh, I, I don't ever, I don't ever like to get involved in those discussions, but, but I did. And, uh, and I've had several people that say, well, I appreciate that because the way you explained it, we understand, you know? And people couldn't wait to get that proclamation, just throw it on Facebook, you know? And so, but it, it is what it is. I mean, we love everybody in the community, and I, I tend to agree with Curtis. I think people have been a lot more cautious. But I, I will stick to my guns that just because it says masks required, they're not all going to wear masks. And nobody's going to call the police.
No, but it should, I mean, it has made a difference though, for sure.
I don't think our numbers have come down any, but, uh, it's, it's still going to take a little while. I mean, it's not going to come down overnight. So I think that there are folks still in the community that don't take it serious. I, I do know of one person that was with a person that got a positive result on day one. And the day before that, they were together, and that person is not quarantining. Now, I don't know that they've been sick yet, but that just kind of bothered me a little bit. That's the reason we have spread. That's it right there. And number two would be, there's people in the community that probably haven't, don't realize it happened, you know? Any other discussion on eight? If not, we will move to item nine, consider convenient executive session to discuss a proposal to entice the location of a medical, medically related business to the city of Perry to create additional jobs, payroll, as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development and implementation of, of this proposal pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven C eleven of the state of Oklahoma, uh, the Oklahoma statutes as amended.
Motion to convenienced executive session.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Heyer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Oral.
Yes.
Strohler.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Strow.
Yes.
Item 11, or item 10, I'm sorry, motion to reconvene in the regular session.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Achor.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Strow.
Yes. Item 11, taking actions with respect to executive session. Seeing and hearing the end, item 12, motion of adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Achor.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Strow.
Yes.